Hi, everybody. All right, we will, it's 4:02, so we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order at November 16th. Can I get a roll call of Planning Commission members present, please? I'm sorry, we should probably like say your names, but everybody can just say they're here.
Say who we have.
I'm here. So we have Bryce.
Yeah, Bryce Erlich, I'm here. Sorry, just looking at my computer.
Lupe.
Lupe, here.
And then I don't, somebody called in here, I don't know.
That's Commissioner Glenn, Heather.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and then I just had a call from Howard that his sentry link is down, but they're supposed to have it up any minute, so he'll join as soon as he can. We have enough with the four of our three of us, Anne, to move along.
If you, you would probably, oh, you have, yes, you do, you have Abby, Bryce, and yourself, so you have three regular members.
Yeah, so we have five of us now. Okay, cool. We are all set. Okay, so. Also, roll call of county commissioners present, please.
Marcella here.
I think we have Mark Glenn, too.
And Glenn's here.
Thank you. We had the Housing Manager update on here from last week's meeting. Christie is out of town, so she emailed us the Housing Manager update. Did anybody have any questions on that?
I didn't have any questions, Heather. Hi, everyone, this is Sarah. I just wanted to add a comment. One of our agenda items was a grant that the Housing Coalition and BAG plan to submit for to CDPHD. And in talking with Christie, it seems that a lot of that work might be focused around supporting the development of the Housing Authority, which is a city entity, and some other, oh, gosh, the policies, I think, as she mentioned in her update, were primarily city-focused. So it sounds like a lot of that work would be focused more towards the city specifically, though, of course, it is a county-wide and community-wide benefit. So I just wanted to throw that out there. That I, I, you know, I tried, I started the conversation with the mayor on how we might support that. And so for what that is worth to this group, I think that that's important to share that, and it's exciting that there'll be, I hope, more, more resources pooled towards the development of the Housing Authority.
Yes, and part of, I know with the Policy Advocate or Advisory Committee, there were more items within the city code this round that we thought would be beneficial to kind of give the nudge towards affordable housing, more so than on the county code of things. So that's why the focus is a little bit more city-oriented for right now. But Anne can chime in a little bit, too, but I feel pretty confident that that's the right direction. I think our most, you know, my own, my own opinion is that I think the most potential for affordable housing right now is in this, within the city limits, just because of infrastructure, density, things like that. So fixing a few of their, of those things, or maybe not fixing, tweaking, whatever, I think it's the right way to go as far as the focus for the first, first few steps of affordable housing focus.
I would totally piggyback on that, Heather. The only thing that I would add is that the housing work, though, is a community-wide project. You know, we identified some low-hanging fruit with the city code that the Policy Advisory Team is going to make some recommendations, but like the deed restriction, the climax parcel. You know, a lot of the other subcommittees and the Housing Coalition itself all has a county investment as well, so the immediate, you know, policy work that's coming out of the pack is definitely directed more at the municipal code at this point. But, you know, the Housing Authority will also be a resource for deed restriction within the county, as well as, you know, other integral parts. So, yep, I think that absolutely we identified some immediate, maybe, suggestions towards municipal code, but I would just suggest that, you know, it does remain a county-wide focus.
Agree. Did anybody else have any questions or comments on that housing update? Okay, awesome. Well, that's going to skip us down to our old business for the zoning, backcountry zone district code amendment preparation. And let me switch screens here. Anne, did you want me to do the intent statement first?
I think that would be a great place to start, because that kind of rolls out, you know, the whole basis of, of what the intent of, of the creation of code is.
Okay, can everybody read that okay?
Yes.
Okay. So I took what Anne already had, and I just took out a few things that I think we're going to go into later on in the code, which was in regards to building permits and water and things like that. So I just slimmed it down just a little bit. Some of this, some of these sentences came from neighboring codes. So I tried to like add a couple words or something in there to change it a little bit, but for the most part, I felt like it did a good job of encompassing what we're looking to do, but I want to make sure that it makes sense to everybody else. So, you know, if you could take a minute and just read that through, and then let me know thoughts and questions and tweaks and things like that.
I like that a lot, Heather.
You as well.
Yeah, it looks like you've got it all in a, in a nutshell. It's good.
Yeah, without getting wordy, because it's easy to do that.
Well, and for those of you that haven't, are just now, you know, kind of jumping into our backcountry zone, does this kind of give a good, you know, those of us who have been involved in the backcountry zone discussion, you know, it's easy for us to read this stuff and have it make sense, but I just want to make it make sense to everybody else, too. So let me know what you guys think.
Heather, my only question is, and, and please forgive me, I'm not very well-versed, so I'm hoping you can help me understand the commercial opportunities that you refer to on the bottom. Would, would things like the 10th Mountain Huts and those types of things be classified differently in, in a backcountry scenario?
Yeah, and so I think, you know, what we, what we talked about, and Anne can help me a little bit with this, but those are already set up in the code as conditional use permit type scenarios, because they're going to have special use requirements. So they would be different than, you know, it would, it would add things to that back, backcountry zone, underlying district, but those would be separately conditionally used permitted underneath the same zone district, but that we're, we're saying here, and mostly for the way of, you can't just automatically do it, and you can't automatically, and you cannot short-term or long-term rent any of these properties unless you're trying to do a more commercial application in which you'd go through a conditional use permit for.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And if I might, Anne, you might want to add those 10 hutts to conditional uses in here.
Yeah, I already, I already made a note. Right, as Heather said, that I realized that, yeah, I didn't, I didn't put any conditional uses in. So it would be those group camps is, would have to be conditionally allowed use. So when I get to that part, we can kind of discuss that a little bit and think about any other opportunities. I think I really liked the statement in here, people's, or persons interested in owning property with ready access to public services and facilities are advised to seek out the more developed urban areas of the county. I think that's kind of quintessential to making sure, you know, just, and I would also just say that there will have to be some processing documents through the building permit process that we will be handing out with like acts and, you know, we, we will make, want to make sure that we very much educate anyone that's coming in to apply, you know, what, what the intent of, of this zone district is, what it is and what it isn't.
I like the summary also. And I wonder on that, that second, or the, the sentence, and I, and I appreciate that comment, too, Anne, and like, including that language of the intent of this, et cetera, on the end, and that characteristics that may be present include sensitive environmental areas, wetlands, steep slopes, sub-alpine, sub-alpine forest or tundra. Present, characters that may be present include, okay. Sorry, I'm sorry, I got lost there thinking aloud. I just, I don't know that it belongs here in the summary, but I think some of those might prohibit some, any number, any amount of development, but.
I think that's a great point, Sarah, and a good lead-in when we get to the use-specific standards and the site plan review. I'll call for, you know, a deeper dive into the investigation if those are present, and whether or not, you know, what feasibility-type situation. So that's a great point. And, you know, we further put in some safeguards there to make sure that we demonstrate that, that building there is appropriate, or is it?
Right, right, right. Characters that may be present and warrant further consideration include, okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this guy?
The only thing that typically within, where this would go in, in, in the code, which is under Chapter 4, which describes all of the different zone districts, this is within all the other information about each district is, this is where the rezon opportunity lies, and how many acres you would need to petition for a rezon. So the two areas that we are looking to change are recreational, currently recreationally zoned, or ag forestry zoned. And recreational zoning has a minimum requirement of 20 acres, and ag forestry has a minimum of 160 acres. So the one item that's kind of outstanding in this portion of the code creation would be, what is the minimum needed in order to petition a certain area to be rezoned? Keeping in mind that, you know, it would have to be have adjacency to start with to be able to be appropriate. And then, you know, what, what size minimum would we be going for with, with all of these type of character, characteristics? Would 20 be reasonable, which is recreational, or would we want it to generally be a much greater amount of land, which would be 160? I would say that 160, we probably will rarely, if ever, see a petition for rezon. 20 acres is probably more within the realm and might encapsulate some areas that perhaps our boundary lines might have inadvertently excluded, but potentially could include. So that's just my thoughts. I'd love some feedback on what everybody thinks about a minimum lot size aid, if we are going to offer rezoning into that country, and if so, what is the minimum that we should consider in order to add any parcels into that country?
So just for clarification, you're talking about the district size would be a minimum of 20 acres or 160 acres, not the actual lot size. So if they're adjacent to already 100-something acres, and their lot is a half an acre, they could still rezon into it and meet that 160 acres.
No, they would need a total of 20 acres in order, or 160, or whatever it is we decide upon. So they'd have to get together with some of their neighbors in order to rezon and be included in that particular backcountry zone.
So we'd need an application of 20, you know, if you want with 20, you'd need an application for 20-plus acres of currently otherwise-owned property that has adjacency to be able to make application.
So is that how we have it? And this, this is going to be me being not, you know, being on the sport for this long and not understanding this, but I always thought that the zone district itself had a minimum of size, and then you could have a minimum lot size, but as long as the district never shrunk below that minimum district size, it didn't matter how big of a piece kept getting added to that, it just could never shrink below that. So like if your district size for ag forestry is 160 acres, then you can add a half acre, an acre, however many you want all day long, as long as that zone district never reduced down to less than 160 acres.
You know, all of the zone districts do have included a definition in their definitions or their descriptions as to what they are. A, a minimum amount of land that you need to have in order to be able to be, to apply, to be included in that particular zone district. And I'm trying to get to there now, and that's Chapter 4?
Yeah, it's Chapter 4.2.
Okay, 4.2, yes, we have, 4.2 is labeled zoning districts. And Shavart zoning districts has a paragraph of a description. Looks like our backcountry zoning is going to have a little bit more than a paragraph, but I think it needs it. But each one of these descriptions includes a, the minimum land area required for this zone district is 160 acres for the AF. For the UR, the minimum land area required for this zone district is 10 acres. For the RC, the minimum land area required for this zone district is 20 acres. So, Anne, that brings up a good question. So say we have a 19 and a half acre land area that's already zoned RC, and somebody wants to add their acre to it, that makes it 20 and a half acres. Is that what that's trying to say, or do we need to actually have no less than 20 acres being asked to be included?
So the way that we've interpreted, at least, you know, like when we did the rezon, the two, well, the rezon that we did to, from IM to UR, and the one that was done in Stringtown, and those were minimum required amounts for the application to, for the, the otherwise-zoned property to apply. And so that's, that's the way the code has been applied, not that we had to maintain a minimum of the existing zone district at, you know, like, say, 40 acre, or 20 acres for rec, that if you were contiguous to recreation, my understanding is there a minimum acreage that you can, you can do to apply? Not that we had to keep the recreational zone district at a minimum of 20 acres.
Yeah, I, I think that's the way we have been applying it, Heather, but, but you do raise a good question.
Well, I guess I'm, I'm just like, from the, from my, my logical brain, which isn't always logical, totally, is that if you have a minimum lot size, like, I, I feel like when we were doing CI zoning back when, and Howard will remember this, we have like, I think we have a minimum lot size that we changed to like four acres or something.
It's only two.
District size, I think, is 20. And so the, the idea behind lowering the actual lot size was that if I had a two-acre piece, there's very few people who had, or had, we changed it to two acres, is that what you said?
The minimum lot, the minimum, what, how I would interpret the minimum rezon is two acres.
Yeah, and the minimum, actual minimum lot size is 10,000 square feet.
It's very small.
Yeah.
We had, I thought that we had done a, we had figured out a, but the district, the zone district size, the minimum zone district size, I thought we had, was still bigger than that. So that if you had a smaller lot, you could still rezon it as long as you were applying, so that spot zoning wouldn't apply. You need the district to remain a certain size, so you can't just take the minimum lot size and rezon it, whatever zone district you want it to be, because the district has to remain a certain size. And so in order for spot zoning to not come into play, because I don't know, I guess I don't know why we would say, well, we don't want any more recreational properties unless somebody has 20 acres that they want to add to this already 200-acre piece of property. Like, why do we care if this person has 20 acres or they have three acres, I guess? I'm just trying to understand why we would have such a big required lot size to rezon, but maybe this is just something we need to talk about. I don't know.
I think it's, I think the lot size, or the minimum rezon size are based on the type, you know, when you look at the characteristics of it. So the higher densities are lower, the higher, you know, the, the greater densities are, have a lesser size to rezon. The greater densities, or the lower densities have a greater land size. So I, you know, on scale of land to density, that's kind of how I would think that it's applied, but, but I'm open, and that's kind of a completely different how, than what I had thought, but I'm totally open to.
You know, Heather, I think that you might be right. I mean, this, the way we've been applying this, the minimum land area required for this zone district is that if you want to change your land, your zoning to something else, you need to have that minimum amount of land area, and.
Or be adjacent to it, to, to create it. That's the way I always interpreted it, like, so if you were.
I think, I think that's exactly what it says. I think you're right.
Yep.
Sorry, Howard.
Yeah, I believe you're, you're 100% on, and, and one of the big things there, where you're trying to avoid spot zoning. And either it had to be adjacent or at the required acreage. So, yeah, I agree, I agree with Heather.
But actually agreeing with that is agreeing with our interpretation, and the way I'm thinking about it, because you're either adjacent, or if you're not, I would think smaller lots. Well, I guess as long as they're adjacent, then maybe you don't run the risk of spot zoning, but.
Right, so the, so the, so if I have five acres, but I'm next to 100 acres of currently zoned, whatever, but I only have five acres, because I still meet the minimum district size, I should be able to still rezon?
I think that's right, Heather. I don't think that's what we've been doing, but I think that's exactly right. Fortunately, we've.
I think it's district minimum, not.
Not the amount you're adding.
Lot size, right. But I think we just have to know that in order to decide what backcountry should be.
But I think you're right, Heather. I think that we've not, that Anne and I have not been using that correctly, and that is the actual intent, is that, like, for UR zoning, the minimum land area required for this zoning district is 10 acres. Doesn't mean that you need, you, you have to have at least 10 acres to rezon to UR. You might only have two acres, but if you're rezoning it and you're adjacent to an existing UR, that just increases the size of the existing UR, which is probably going to be greater than 10 acres. So, but, what this means is somebody wants to spot zone, like, like the CI zone district, the minimum land area required for this zoning is two acres, which means that you could take a piece of land that is three acres somewhere and apply to have it rezoned to CI, whatever it is that's around it.
Right. So for back, if, if we go with that, that idea, the backcountry option would be the 160 or the 20.
I think, yeah.
And it seems like 20 seems really small to me for a whole zone district.
Well, all of our zone districts are including several sections of land.
Right.
So, and action is what, 640 acres? So I, I, I would suggest that we use the same as the RC zoning, and just. You, that the, the minimum size of any backcountry zone district will have to be 20 acres. That means that somebody, somewhere, might have two 10-acre mining claims in, of, of some other zone district, and they'd be allowed to apply to change those two mining claims to backcountry. I'm not sure that's a problem. Because we tried to collect all of the existing recreational mining claims. We tried to bring all of those into our backcountry zone district. Now, I know we failed. I know it is not possible to get them all. Howard, how many did you think there were? Maybe 600 or 700 of them?
Yeah, around, around that, at least, at least 500. And, you know, most of those, those recreational mining claims, the ones that people used to put cabins on, almost all those were 10 acres.
Right.
Yeah. Well, that's a mining claim, it's 10 acres, and some that have been subdivided down or less, of course, but, but that was, that was right. I'd say around 500.
Okay.
So we. scattered all over the county.
We probably got a major portion of those, and we call them recreational mining claims. And when I first appeared up Lake County, I thought, isn't that an oxymoron, a recreational mining claim?
Actually, it could have been called something like a mining claim that's not really used for mining.
Right.
But they, and everybody was building a cabin on for recreation, so we thought the logical thing was to call them a recreational mining claim.
Or a residential mining claim. But it took me a little while, Howard, to, to figure that out, but our question now is, what is the minimum size we want for a backcountry zone district? And if we leave it at 20, that means that somebody could actually, with two 10 and 10.33 acre mining claims, could actually apply to change the zoning to rec, to backcountry, even though it may not be adjacent to an already backcountry. How do we feel about that?
I don't think that's necessarily the worst thing, because they're almost willingly giving themselves an extra set of regulations. I don't think that's necessarily the worst thing because they're almost willingly giving themselves an extra set of regulations. You know, this regulation is going to be better for, it's going to be more restrictions and more protections, right? So if someone wants to willingly opt into that, they lower their barriers to entry for building a cabin and using it recreationally. But that's all. They they sign up for a whole different set of, you know, protection, uh, comp plan. Adherence.
If 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 we do that, then we need to, would is it does everyone believe that that we should exclude the ability for IM parcels to be able to rezone to that country? Because that's that's where the other mining claims are that are specifically excluded in in the, you know, in kind of um, the big picture. So um, would we you know, that's the area to me that that you're opening up the door um, to rezone because we already know we get those calls all the time. So.
I think maybe you're saying you can only rezone it if it's not in the IM zone.
Yeah.
Is there like a quick ver uh, definition of the IM zone? I'm sorry.
Yo, no, 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 you're fine. I uh, let me, I'm happy to read that. Just.
I've got it here, Anne.
Oh, do you have it?
Intended to allow the establishment of exclusive areas for the construction, fabricry fabrication, assembly or other industrial processing of goods and other materials. And for mining, concentrating, refining, mixing, or other related mineral extraction processing and disposal activities at appropriate locations within Lake County. You can use it industrially.
Yeah.
Can't put a house on it. And I think.
And and it was primarily picked because that was the areas that historically had been already pretty well disturbed for mining activities.
I think I have to make a statement in our back country zoning that if you want to rezone it to to back country, you can't do it if it's per currently zoned IM.
I agree.
I actually don't know. I mean, I think that that is some individuals prerogative. And I can appreciate that, but I don't, I mean, I think that do we have to think about, you know, with Parkville's watershed and what mining could actually occur on certain parcels in the IM? I mean, there there's, I don't know, I'm not sure that I would restrict that. To.
I would just encourage everyone to remember that we did a code amendment to the comp plan to spec expressly prohibit residential use in in the current IM zone district. So I just in the thought of being consistent, that's a completely different discussion.
Well, but the, well, but I think that this actually might support that because we're saying that we're we're clearly laying out in the back country that you know, your access may be limited or zero, emergency services. This is not, this sets a whole new or different um, list of expectations of of minimal access. And I think that that was always the angst with working in the industrial mining of either developing roads or getting that access or, you know, uh, what what government services would have to be expected if you were to permit a typical residential dwelling in the IM.
I don't think it's a dwelling as much as it is occupancy by residents and the life safety issues. So I don't really think it had a bearing on the type of structure as much as it did whether or not it was appropriate for habitation.
Howard, why don't.
Yeah, I mean.
Wow, houses in in the IM.
Uh, primarily uh, subsidence, um, and the and the fact that uh, you know, the this, the the stopes, the added, the shafts, everything that's uh, a hazard to the residential and the residents that would be in the mining district. And um, that was basically it. And I, of course, there's always the underlying fact that there's still metals available that someday we, some future day, they may have to go get them.
And then part of that permitting process, you know, as far as getting the approvals for that. Things like the watershed and and all of that are going to come into play. Um, I would be devastated to see us allow any kind of residential use in the mining districts. I think that money will talk, um, you know, and people with lots of money will be like, that's the best view in town. And I don't care that the soils are bad. I don't care that there's mine shafts everywhere. You know, like, it's just, I just feel like that's a nightmare um, of a decision. In my own opinion, I think.
I agree with this. I agree with you, Heather.
Um, the, I mean, it definitely does make me want to make me lean towards a larger zone district than twenty acres. It makes me think you need because I'm also thinking to myself, if the idea is to not spot zone twenty acre spot zones seem, I mean, those are spot zones. If you look at a zoning map and somebody just zones a twenty acre piece somewhere in the middle of nothing. That seems really small to me um, versus the hundred and sixty. So I with this discussion, I would probably lean more towards that. Um, and then I personally would lean towards no um rezone if you're in the in the mining district.
Well, a hundred and sixty acres is a quarter section.
Mm hmm.
Right.
We have used quarter sections in our descriptions of the zone district. Um, maybe that's the number we want to use, Heather, is is a hundred and sixty acres.
What are everybody else's thoughts?
Uh, I think the hundred and sixty acres makes a lot of sense, Heather and and uh uh, Clarkson, I think that's a good way to go.
Start, okay. I was just trying to look at what, what are the areas that we have sectioned off now? Okay, fi- fifty nine hundred acres. Ninety one hundred acres.
Sectioned off for what?
Uh, um, the proposed back country boundary.
Oh, you're, so you're looking at a map?
Yeah, I was looking at, oh, I was clicking on the wrong thing. Uh, I'm unable to.
Um, Bryce, do you mind sharing the, I know you've got it usually kind of handy? If he, if, can he screen share that with us, Heather?
Yeah.
There's the link that um, I can also screen share it.
Oh, yeah, if you want to just, I'll uh.
Yeah, all of our back country zones are being, are pretty large.
Yeah.
Making it a hundred and sixty minimum would preclude anything from ever getting rezoned into that country. I mean, there's.
Well, unless it's adjacent, unless it's adjacent, Bryce, right? That's, that's the way we're we're now learning that um, so it wouldn't, this would be to pretty much precluded from being able to be a a spot zone, but if it hasn't. Yeah, as long as it's adjacent, it could have, um, it could make applications.
Can Bryce, can you share a screen, Bryce?
I'm trying to pull it up for him. He sent it to me here.
All right.
So these are our proposed areas right now.
Right. They're pretty big.
Yep.
So it would take a hundred and sixty acres to put anything in that.
Like over here.
On the map, okay.
Like put a new square somewhere.
Right.
But if you had something that was adjacent here or, you know, whatever, you could potentially rezone it in there. I thought that when we did this, and Bryce, you know more probably, um, that we really did encompass most private property that was in these sections. Like, obviously, this is the boundary, the county boundary.
Yeah, there's, there's actually, that was going to be a point we were going to have to address. Um, because we did this along section lines. There are some mine claims that are split right down the middle, right? And so do those mine claims get automatically included in the district? Are they automatically excluded? Are they, you know, split zoned?
Yeah, that's a problem that we've had in the past, and we're creating it for ourselves again.
How, how does, how are these ones that are splitting the line right now zoned? Is the zone district go around them?
No, so right now that IM zone you see right there, that cuts across and splits, you know, fifty different parcels. So the problem is already is there.
We've, we spent a lot of time, you know, maybe some members remember and commissioners remember, we spent quite a bit of time talking about dual zoning. Um, and and a method by which to address it and and we finally landed on that that portion of the property is ruled by whatever zone district it it lies in. So if you have dual zoning in a parcel. Um, the portion that is, like if you had an IM portion and you had a back country zoning portion, the back country zoning portion of that land, we would require it to be surveyed and identified a building permit if one was polled. And the only portion that they would be allowable to be built on would be the one that was in that zone district. So we had quite a discussion on dual zoning a while back, and we talked about perhaps the majority of the parcel ruling, um, that had been a discussion previously, but we finally landed on the portion um, that lies within the district rules that portion of land.
I I I recall that. I think you're right about that, Anne.
She is.
Uh, that's a policy thing that we came up with. And we're probably going to have to codify it somehow because people are gonna come in and push it. But I think our our smallest area is down there near near uh, to the left of For Bay and then down by Granite Mountain. Those are the two smallest areas and they are still over two sections land.
Heather, if you reload the map, the parcels should show up. If you want to show those. It's kind of ugly, but it's just a good for demonstration to see that the lines aren't perfect, but they are encompassing the majority of the parcels.
So I'm trying to jump back and forth between the project link you gave us, Bryce, and the tax person will, oh, wait, no, maybe I can just add.
Come up on the internal projects map again.
Oh, no, no, no. That's fine. I just, I I missed the toolbar up on the top, but we should have, have we excluded federally owned land from the back country zone area?
Um, we've excluded it to the extent that it is pat back country. Or if it is actually federally owned land, it is not zoned. But we had to include much of federal land as being zoned back country because many of those recreational mining parcels are in.
Right.
Contained within Forest Service land or BLM land.
And that's what our zoning map does currently. It identifies in holdings within federal land. The zone district recognizes that they're in holdings within privately owned properties within the areas surrounded by federal or state land.
Bryce, what's the gray?
The gray is just um, road federally federally designated roadless areas. So I was asked to put that on there just to kind of um.
Thank you.
Point that a lot of this area already is designated that it can't have roads, doesn't have roads. You know, so steep that it couldn't even have them built there.
I think, uh, yeah, I think without getting into a rabbit hole dealing with the federal land issue, once we have something closer or even perhaps now, I'd I'd like for us to send this to um Forest Service and BLM and other agencies to be sure that they can review and give us some feedback. Because I don't, I don't want to inadvertently advocate for access. Although I know we're trying to limit that where it it then causes a problem for for service.
Yeah, actually, that's an excellent idea. We should do that. Um, and if Forest Service decides not to give somebody access to their recreational mining claim. That's not our problem.
Right, but I don't, I also, I mean, I'm wondering if they'd come back and say, can you just eliminate it from that zone, those boundaries altogether because we're it giving a wrong impression? I'm not sure. Let's see what they have to say.
I mean, the county zoning already is already on all of these properties. There's county zoning on top of all of these government properties already. They just know that it doesn't apply on those, um, on that, on federally owned property. Um, and I think that's the case in most counties. Um, so I don't, I don't think that they would say, hey, you just eliminate any zoning on our ground because they already kind of state that.
I I just know we've had a recent issue and, you know, in the spirit of reducing um hardship on staff to kind of have that conversation again and again. I I'd I'd be curious to see what they might suggest. How to, how to make that clearer for the average user.
We do have, our zoning map does actually identify those zone districts that are, that we're only zoning in holdings. We're not zoning anything else, just the in holdings. And that's the zoning that has the stripes and the solid color. And and so it may be that we should stripe our back country zoning.
Well, and and to Sarah's point, part of, part of this whole process, once it becomes an application, which it is not yet, will be a mandatory referral time. Um, so we will be notifying all the stakeholders um, as well as agencies, anyone that 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 might be affected by this proposal and change. So most definitely, um, we will be referring this out to our our list of referral agencies, which absolutely will include them.
Yeah, I I, yeah, that's right. But I know that like us, you and I, it's hard for us to respond in thirty days. Um, and it's even harder for them to respond in thirty days. So I think the sooner we get this out to them, the better off we might be to BLM and Forest Service.
Well, and Sarah, if you, since, you know, you case in point of having an example, if you have some direct contacts that you think um, I can certainly share with you who who I refer to, but if you know specifically who you think would be most targeted with this information, I'm happy to share it with them sooner than later. So if you want to provide that um, to me, that'd be great.
Great. Yeah, I think you would just send that to Pat Mercer, the district ranger.
Okay.
And he'll, yeah, he'll pay, should pay attention to that.
Okay.
As well.
We have a list of those federal referral agencies. I think Bureau of Reclamation may want to be one of them as well. Um, one of the thoughts that I did have, though, is that all of our back zone districts are based upon section lines and quarter section lines. If somebody wants to add themselves to that to one of those um, back country zonings, it's going to significantly change the legal description of that zone district. So we're probably going to I'm not sure how to handle that.
Yeah, it it it's a lot cleaner right now, but on a rezone, that might be, might be part of the rezone process that's required to
Yeah.
recreate and remap and.
Well, it should be. If anybody wants to rezone their property to anything, we should get it surveyed. And that should be a requirement. All right. Did we beat that up enough?
So. Don't go ahead. If you've got more comment, I was gonna just kind of wrap up. So go ahead.
Oh, no, I was just, uh, looking for any additional feedback from, from, uh, planning commissioners on the minimum district size and the thoughts on allowing IM to be rezoned.
Well, yeah, I think I've already given my opinion that I'd like that, uh, that hundred and sixty acre, uh, ending forestry. And, um, uh, I, I agree that we should eliminate the, uh, avoid the IM, uh, not allow the, uh, the building in the IM. Other than now.
The rezoning of IM.
The rezoning of IM, yeah.
I agree.
You think, you think that's so, Abby?
Yeah, I mean, I, I I think now that I understand it better and thank you guys for, I think, and I'm knowing the one hundred and sixty and just seeing where IM is, um, primarily like, yeah. I think keeping the houses is good.
Loopy?
Yeah, no, um, similar to Abby, I've just been hearing a lot of more information, just trying to, taking notes down of all the conversation that's going down and, uh, uh, trying to understand the language and all the information that's being shared. But yeah, I, I totally agree that we should limit and not, uh, with the IM, not allow commercial residential, um, projects going on in, in IM zones for the reason why it's just like, I think preservation is very important and it's very key. And that what makes us, uh, let go beautiful, just trying to restrict a lot of building and, uh, avoid any, um, people building in areas that could be potentially dangerous.
I think that Sarah's, um, made a point about going down a rabbit hole. Um, and I think that, um, that's easy for us to do here. And I think Bryce, you helped us, um, pull us away from that rabbit hole in your comment that was, it's probably not as big a problem as we're making it out to be.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's, you know, the one hundred and sixty acres kind of might be a little too big. Maybe you could put something in there that specifies that you're only allowed to rezone under that acreage if it's a patented mining claim. You know, I just don't think we're gonna have a bunch of people signing on for more regulations. But these people that own mining claims that haven't been included in the back country zone, maybe we should lower the barriers for them to rezone to give them that lower, you know, barrier entry to build a cabin, to use it recreationally. And to go off of what Lupe said, you know, they're gonna be basically helping us with preservation at that point because of those increased regulations in the back country zone. That's my two senses that, um, we, we should allow these mining claims. I see some of these offsets. There are over twenty acres, you know, it only takes two claims, but maybe we should give those mining claims the same opportunity as the ones that we included in our convenient section line legal description. So.
A question about, about those, or so are you identifying areas that, you know, would typically support, you know, easily support a typical residential use? Or are they rural and remote? Are they, I just, do they kind of fit into the definition of, of the zone district? Cause I think that we were, you know, um, you know, putting these kind of lesser than, um, a single family detached in areas that, you know, were more of this kind of nature. So are, so are those still areas that are, um, that, that you may be identifying? Are those areas that are, have the same challenges that the back country has?
Yeah, if you look, there's a little, I can't really, um, it's on my screen, but if you look just to the north of the half moon drainage, there's four, it looks like one, two, three, four or so, yeah, that one right there, they stick out on their own. Now that's forty acres probably, um, with all the exact same characteristics as the rest of the back country zone. But because it's on its own, it wasn't really included in the initial legal description. You know, there's nothing else they could, they, they're not gonna be able to build a, a regular house up there. I think the only way they could use that is to build a cabin or these recreational uses with, you know, no emergency services hard to get to.
It's a good point.
Great point, and I think that there's cause to include them within the boundary. And, you know, instead of thinking the minimum size base may be on a specific area, if we see a specific area now that we may have missed, I think it would be better to have the discussion of including it within the initial creation and try, you know, so, um, you know, we weren't, when we did these, we were using section lines, we were using access points. Um, you know, that, those are parcels that I, you know, we, we hadn't identified when we created these. So my thought is if, if we find some while we're doing it, that makes sense to be created that we expand to those areas instead of forcing them to go through a rezone someday if, you know, if they make sense now.
Absolutely. And do you, I mean, I think maybe the, what we should be looking for is all patented mining claims, right? Not necessarily, just that's what I see is these areas that have been excluded from the zone. There's still back, there's still patented mining claims, you know? I don't want to include any of these large former homesteads or anything.
You just wonder how are they gonna be able to build up there if there's no road access, like?
That goes for a lot of the zone district though, right? I mean, there's a lot of places. There's yurts already that have been built, they, they had to have been hiked in. I mean, it's crazy the things I've found.
I guess that's what donkeys are for, but.
And there, there's some areas, uh, I know, I was a successor that actually hauled their building materials in by hand.
Yeah.
Greg, uh, is a good example of that.
But my, my proposal and suggestion would be if, um, Bryce, with your help and your expertise, if we can identify areas that maybe we might have missed in, in our initial creation of, of these areas that, that makes sense to include in, um, then, um, depending on what everyone else thinks, I think maybe it would be a good time to just go ahead and identify them and, and make them inclusive of the creation of this, uh, district.
I agree. I agree.
I agree.
Prepare, just visualize it so we can talk about it. I mean, I don't have to finalize anything, but I'd like to, if I visualize that, it might be a little easier to see that we can include all the, you know, these little straggler parcels that are really just on their own.
Yeah.
So my concern I see here, just quickly while we're talking about this map, is this is Highway eighty-two. And are these guys right here that are right on the highway gonna be? Those are the only ones that I see that I'm like, well, they're not so remote and they're maybe not so happy if they can't build more than a twelve hundred square foot house on there.
That particular parcel, just I know that one in particular is, is basically a forty-five degree slope and that parcel is in the wrong location. Um, I have to correct it because the guy came in, you know, asked him more information about it. That entire parcel is actually on the east side of the highway on the slope. I mean, it's, but it would take some, you have to go out and find the corners to kind of get it hammered out. But, um, that is in error that's been around, this is all from the federal government, you know? They still think the parcel crosses the highway, but if you look at the original mineral survey plat, it is not in the river bottom because that entire river bottom was a separate placer mining claim that was already. Anyways.
You know, Bryce, I'm looking at a parcel map here and I'm looking at north of the half moon drainage. And I don't see any mining claims there.
Are you looking at our screen?
They're not identifying, they might, they might have already been absorbed back into the forest.
You're talking about these, right Bryce?
Yeah, it's like, you know, and so what a lot of times, and this happened up on, um, another area where I see some that are excluded is up by Home Stake, the original Home Stake Mine. Some of those are privately held. Some of those have been purchased by the Forest Service and, you know, put back into the public domain. It's just that the parcel remains.
Yeah, I, I think we already knew that we weren't getting them all.
Well, but the idea too is, is to shift from people asking or requesting things in physically dangerous places for like more long-term residency to this back country. So maybe topography in that grade um, is, is part of, you know, let's shift folks that are in a certain grade or, or they could apply to be part of the back country zoning.
I, I actually wouldn't have any objection to saying you can apply if you have a patented mine claim. Just about everything there is gonna be patented mining claim actually. One time, you know, in the beginning, all of Lake County was mining claims. Yeah. Um, most of them still are patented. So the chances are good that they would be. You agree Bryce?
The ones that would want to go back into the back country on their own would be patented?
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I can't think of any. Cause all the rest of the land that's not a patented mining claim has already been either, you know, subdivided into something else or it's.
Or it's Forest Service.
Or it's Forest Service or it's usable for a regular, you know, regular structure, regular residence.
Yeah.
So my concern with that is the confusion that people are gonna have who have patented mining claims in the IM district, because most of those are patented also.
Well, we would exclude the, the, uh.
I know, but I'm just worried that if we're gonna start using mining claim in our definition of what you can use as, it's just that the verbiage is really hard, like we were talking about earlier with people trying to understand mining claim, yet recreational, you know? And so like, it's just, I'd almost rather get away from using the pure mining claim when we're using, when we have a district that's mining.
It, it does get confusing if you're not, uh, uh, used to it. What would you rather call them?
Well, I mean, I think I'd rather just leave it with your minimum size or include them upfront like Anne suggesting. I'd rather it all have to do with your minimum lot size, parcel size, because, yeah. It's just that like some of these are partial claims anyway, you know, I don't know. I just feel like if we just have a minimum lot size and/or we include these guys, these stragglers upfront, then that would.
I have a feeling we might be going down a rabbit hole here.
Yeah, because I don't know that, I mean, does zoning apply if it's unpatented anyway? Can you do anything with an unpatented technically?
If it's an unpatented.
Like this is a moot point, yeah.
It's on federal land anyway. And the feder, the feds have control over unpatented mining claims.
Right.
There's a BLM.
So maybe Bryce and Anne can get together and decide if there's any stragglers that you want to include and/or not, but I, it sounds like unless anybody is saying differently that the hundred and sixty minimum district size and the no rezoning in the IM district. Yes?
I think including a lot of them on the front end totally makes the one hundred and sixty issue.
I, I, that's the way to do the, do that Heather. Some of these other patented mining claims are at twelve thousand feet, you know, and, and they're completely rock and they're at sixty degree slopes.
Right, right. That's a good point too. Those are all really good points. So yeah, I definitely think in the, in the thought of kind of honoring time, um, I, I would love Bryce, if you're available, maybe you and I can, um, kind of go through the ones that you've identified and, and put together a quick proposal, you know? If we think that, um, there's any that would be good to offer inclusive of this process or if a little further detail kind of, um, maybe drives us away from thinking that, you know, we're chasing too many, um, what-if scenarios, so. Um, but definitely, um, if, if everyone's good with that, Bryce and I can work, um, on, on seeing if there's other areas to potentially identify. Would that be okay with you Bryce?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think it's really small.
I do too.
But yeah, I think it would just maybe if we included on the front end, we can eliminate problems. Yeah.
Absolutely. That sounds great. Um.
Do you want to go to staff review, Anne, or the back country draft?
Well, I think I just kind of, I'm just gonna keep moving through kind of the draft because I think this is really great because the next, um, you know, we're just kind of going through the creation of code and, and so this is great. Um, we've been through the, uh, statement explaining what it is and, um, you know, what, what kind of zone district size it should be and that we want to exclude IM parcels from being able to rezone. Um, so now if we go to, so we've kind of made it through chapter four, the creation of the zone district. And now we go into chapter five, um, where we're going to start creating and adding to the table of uses, this new created back country zone district. And so what the table of uses does is it establishes what kind of uses are used by right, what uses are prohibited and what uses could be allowed conditionally. So use by right is where I've started. Um, and what we have talked about is with certain parameters, single family detached homes be allowed. Um, back country structures who, which have certain use specific standards can be allowed. And camping on private property with the same use specific standards are all, um, you know, at the base of I think what we designed the code for and what's allowable. So I'd love to hear just, just on the basis of use by right, without getting into like the, the, the standards by which each of these would be allowed if we think we're in the right place for use by right allowances, things that can be done um, subject to certain standards. Keeping in mind that single family detached homes are used by right, but they in theory have a whole set, set of specific standards through the issuance of a building permit. So even though I don't have standards associated with a single family detached home, there is a whole process to be able to obtain a building permit for a single family detached home. The only difference in the definition is that, um, single family detached, um, holy cow, I'm starting to waver on what I know and I've been talking about this too long. Uh, single family homes have a limitation of size, correct?
Yes. So we can notate that somewhere because I feel like if you're looking at the table and you say, oh, use by right, then you start planning and engineering and doing all these things for a three thousand square foot house and you find out you can't. I just would like it to be super clear everywhere in the code so that it's not like, oh, but if you had looked in this one section, you would have found out that you have a square footage max, you know? I, if we can just be as friendly as possible about that, is there is something else we can put there? Since it's not necessarily different standards that we can just to let people know upfront?
We can, I think the best, the, the, the most direct place to see if there's anything unique would be, would be to add a new specific standard to single family detached in the back country. So in the column, and Paul's really good at formatting this kind of stuff, but my first thought, Paul, would be to have some kind of, just like we have allowed use, conditional use for camping, the AC and some of those. Um, maybe the use specific standards has a, there is a use specific standard for single family detached in the back country. That's not, um, prevalent in, in the other zone districts, but we might be able to specify that within the standards that it's a, it's a back country standard.
Yeah, I think that can be done. The, the table does include a column of use specific standards. We can list all of the standards that we want in there.
And just so that everybody, you know, realizes, so the standards, when you're looking at the table, I should have, I should have done a screenshot of the table, but, um, when you're looking at the table, there's, you have your use and then in the park column are the standards. So immediately when you see the table, you, you can immediately see the standards associated with it. And they're all in chapter five, just like you can see the tables at five point one. The standards are at five point, they start at five point two. So immediately following the zone district allowable uses in chapter five. Then after the table, the next, um, part of the code is the standards associated with all the uses. So. Then after the table, the next, um, part of the code is the standards associated with all the uses. So immediately at the table where you identify it. And then they, they directly follow it in the code.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
That's one of the things that Ann and I have been doing when we've been adding to the, um, table of uses. Conditional and per, permitted, conditional and prohibited uses, we've been making sure that. That a use specific standard is actually included there. So until Ann and I got here, there were no use specific standards. And, um, now we've been making sure that we add use specific standards. So, so that can't be, so they, they've got no excuse if they missed that.
Okay, cool.
Um, are there, and I, you know, I forgive me, I think I should have sent everyone the use table because I'm not sure everybody's familiar with it. But based on our discussions so far, um. Does everyone think, or, or maybe by the next meeting, reviewing the use table and seeing if there's any other uses that. Um, other than standards associated with them that should be allowable in the zone district? Um, I would love to, you know, hear follow-up. I think these are the, the big three. Um, but Heather brought up a really great point. I think there was a question on, uh, Sarah had about the non-commercial use. Um, so we do want to continue, I believe, to support conditional use permits for things like the hut system. Or potential, um, camps that we can, um, support through a conditional use permit. So right now I have conditional uses none. But I would add to that the existing use of a group camp. That's the use that we use for like the tenth mountain. Um, uh, cabins that have come online. Um, that's how we process those. So initially I would think that there is at least one conditional use that I haven't added on here and that would be group camp. And then other than that, unless we specifically acknowledge any other kinds of uses that are appropriate in the backcountry, everything else will be prohibited.
Yeah, we, we should, we should all do that. We should go through the table.
Yeah, I agree. I guess I hadn't thought about it. I thought I had like in my head thought, oh, well, it'll just be whatever is the record, because that we were talking about overlay before. It'll be whatever the other zone district was, but yeah, you're right. We should be. If everybody can take, um, some time between now and next meeting to look at the use table and kind of say, hey, this seems like it's appropriate. Um, if it's not appropriate, we'll leave it prohibited. But if there's anything you identify in the use table that you feel like should be considered. Even through conditional use permits, um, and we want to make sure we add it.
Yeah, like we've got water diversions, water, uh, reservoirs. Um, uh, looks like transmission lines. I mean, I, I would expect that. Transmission lines are going to want to go through some of our areas and they are, they do require conditional use. So there. But I think are appropriate to list.
Yeah, there may be some utilities, um, uses and different things. Um, so I will email every one table five point one and take a look at all of the different types of uses. And see if there's anything that makes sense to either add as a conditional, um, allowance, or if there'd be a really good argument to allow it as a use by right. Next are breaking down backcountry structure. So, um, it doesn't, backcountry structure doesn't get defined until chapter nine. But basically what we have said is that it's a non-commercial, um, less than permanent structure. Under twelve hundred square feet. Is, um, the definition of a backcountry. That's just kind of the generic definition. So. This, these are the restrictions or the standards that a backcountry has to abide by. Um, so the first one, all structures are subject to building permit and site plan review. There will be a whole separate site plan review. Um, that is done administratively. So it won't, most of our, this will be the only site plan review that we have in the code. That gets done through building and land use. Everything else site plan wise, we bring, uh, one building permit, building permit. And backcountry code, um, backcountry zone would go through administrative. That being said, I think it's important to always bring it up, that staff always has. The ability to, um, bring forth decisions that they feel they need, the expertise, the planning commission and board. Um, to make those decisions. So inasmuch as, as this is an administrative, um, process. We always have the ability to lift up any administrative decisions. So if we were in a situation potentially where we had. Um, hazard mitigation or. Issues specific to a site that Paul and I or the administration at the time. Um, felt that they needed, um, the support of the board and the planning commission, um, we would always lift those up. So that's on any decision that's administrative, we, we always have the ability to bring it to you guys for assistance. But I think in the spirit of trying to keep this as streamlined as possible, um, we want to start with an administrative review. So what does everybody think about number one? I just thought we'd start small because they're kind of heavy lifts.
Number one on, on what?
On the use specific standards, what we just talked about. All structures are subject to building permit and site plan review. As outlined in the site plan and we'll get to site plan, but just the thought they're administered. Uh, by building and land use and compliance would be approved, building code and zoning codes. So no matter, uh, so backcountry structures, this makes them subject to building code and site plan review. Administered by, um, building and land use. Does that afford a certain streamlining? Do you think that those site plans need to be reviewed like other site plans by the planning commission? Right now, planning commission reviews multifamily, anything in the SCO and anything commercial. Those site plans, staff does not final those, those we bump up to the planning commission. Do you think that there would be any merit in the backcountry zone site plan review being done by a broader audience?
I think. Keeping it administrative rather than subject to commission review is probably where we want to. Is where we want to stay. I think that it's, that it's okay that if administrators, you and me, Ann. Want to bump it up to, um, planning commission review, for instance, um, I think that. I think I like your idea of being able to do that if we want.
But yeah, how does, how, um, Heather, what do you think about that?
I agree. Um, I think that makes the most, this, the way it's written makes the most sense to me. Um, and I think that as long as we have the standards, you know, pretty well dialed for you guys so that you're not dealing with a bunch of. Sorry, send it back or sorry, I don't, you know, I mean, I just would like it to be as clear as possible for people so that you're not dealing. You know, I also don't want staff time to be nutso with these kind of site reviews. So if we have. You know, those standards pretty clear and pretty descriptive, I think that helps mitigate that a little bit. Um, so, yeah, I'm, I'm totally on board with, with that myself. Anybody else's thoughts on that?
Yeah, I agree, uh, that, that ought to go before Ann and, uh, Paul. They've got enough to do anyway. They can handle this, too.
Yeah.
But I, and I, and I like Paul's remarks saying that. If there's something in there that's a little bit funny or a little bit odd, that maybe they push it up to us then. And that, that, because I really think it's really their, their job, their, their place to go through these first. So. Good, good idea, Paul.
Uh, actually, that's Ann's, isn't it?
Ann.
Yeah.
That's okay. Hey, we're a team. So we're, we're, we're best together. So, um, okay, so back, so ne, next to. Um, structures may not be utilized for any type of commercial use, including but not limited to short-term rental. I just think that, I know it's in. That Heather has it in the intent of the zone district, but I don't, I, I don't think we can oversell the non-commercial aspect of this. So. I would like to put it in there as well.
Do you want to just, just to be consistent?
Do what? I'm so sorry, Abby.
Just include long-term, just to be consistent with that intent statement?
Agreed.
Sure. Yeah, I think that sounds great.
Yeah, the intent statement says or long-term. And, but I'm wondering if we have to add it, or for clarity, um, to Kayla's point earlier, if we should add a sentence on here. Other than those uses identified, like I don't know if we need to have something that's, oh, no, backcountry structure, sorry. Ignore me.
That's okay. That's okay. No, this is what, this is what code draft, creating code is all about. You go back and forth and back and forth and so. My brain is a little jelloey, so I appreciate, uh, new, fresh eyes looking at this and things that you don't catch are really important, so. Um, thank you, Abby. That's great. Absolutely. So I will add, but not limited to short or long-term rental to be consistent.
We're not going to let anybody rent their, um, their structure, whatever it is. They can't rent it.
Right. I think there's an inherent, you know, there's an inherent risk that they take and I think just like the state allows. Um, people to do their own plumbing and electrical work on, on when they're building a home. Those are inherent risks that you take. Um, I don't think you can pass those off to someone else. So the backcountry has a whole bunch of aspects that, you know, you can choose for yourself, but maybe you shouldn't choose for others.
So these, these, um, the backcountry zone district parcel is intended to be used by the property owner exclusively.
Yeah, and I, there's some, I think that I've got that in the definition. It's. But if I, if we don't get to that, then let me add that because I did put something, the only thing about it is. There, there was a statement in the previous code and I think it gets sticky, you know, it's, we're a little out of, out of, um, sync here, but I think it's important to talk about. Um, because I think I might have not addressed that, um, because it, it's, it's a little difficult. And I think it said that. Backcountry structures can be utilized by the property owner, guests or their fam, exclusive of themselves, their guests or their family. I think it's super hard to, I don't want to have to, um, define guests or family. So I kind of stayed, stayed away, uh, identifying who could use it and doing more what was excluded from the activity. But that, I'm totally open to, for thoughts on that, but I've seen that term applied somewhere else. And I think it's a really hard way to manage and then not step on. A family status, protective family. I, so, um, property owner, guests or family, I was staying away from. Identifying the use restricted to them and applying more of a non-commercialness to it. But I would love to hear thoughts on that.
I think your thinking is sound, um, because this is one of those things where somebody is going to. Uh, say, hey, you can go use my yurt and they'd be a guest and, um. And the owner would say, well, they're my guest. I don't know that I want to go so far as to say that doesn't count. You can't do that.
Real hard to police also.
Yeah, I guess I'm getting into that.
Uh, yeah, I kind of wanted to just stay away from it. I'm glad that maybe there's consensus that was a good place. A, I think it'd be really hard to enforce. So I, I think the, the biggest thing that we want to make sure is that there's not, these aren't popping up on VRVO and Airbnb and. Hipcamp and all of those.
Well, and to Abby's point, like, I don't, I don't want people trying to rent these things out either, long-term, you know?
Right, right.
People being like, oh, well, it's the only place I can afford for four hundred dollars a month, so I'm going to go rent this place that doesn't have a, you know, I just. That's not the idea. So I think we want to keep that out of there, too.
Okay, yeah, I think that's absolutely great. So, um. Number three, at the discretion of the building official, the structure and site plan may be referred to other state and local agencies to include, but not limited to public works like the Lake County Fire Rescue. And/or environmental health. Additional agency review may be needed to address environmentally sensitive areas, including but not limited to. Wildland urban interface, wetland and geologic hazards, critical fish and wildlife habitat and alpine tundra. Again, that, and that, that piggybacks back to the site plan. The site plan, we talk about supplemental requirements and. Kind of a more site-by-site basis of what kind of an environmental investigation might need to be done in order to support pulling a building permit.
Why don't you also add in there, may be referred to other federal, state and local agencies?
I was thinking of that, too, Paul.
Federal, state and local, okay.
Federal, state and.
Federal out there.
Okay.
Maybe we should refer this to God, too.
If he, if he'd answer. Um, other federal and state, so additional federal and state agency review may be needed to address environmentally sensitive areas? Does that? No, no, sorry.
No, just at the discretion of the BO, the structure and site plan. Federal, state and local agencies.
Okay. Got it. Sorry, there was somebody in my house. I had to tell him, no, sorry. Uh, okay, so moving on to number four, backcountry structures shall have an approved method of sanitary waste removal or treatment by the jurisdiction having authority. Required prior to building permits and approval. I might have gotten a little too generic, but I started being a little concerned about being too specific. Because what if the authority having jurisdiction is forevermore not public health? Um, what if the state, you know, so I, I just, um, so basically this is saying that they have to have an approved method of sanitary waste removal or treatment. Um, because most of these, as I think most of you know, will have to have a variance granted. For a alternative method to get rid of, of waste versus an onsite waste treatment system. Um, and so that, in order to support these backcountry builds, they'll have to have some method of sanitary waste removal. Or treatment. And, um, so this is addressing the fact that, um, typically these structures are. Always these structures are going to have to have a variance for the method by which they deal with their sanitation. Um, I could certainly put in Lake County Public and Environmental Health, but. I was just being a little cautious that they, and the thought of the code living on beyond potentially maybe a change in that direction.
Well, and that was kind of what I feel like I heard Jackie say to us when we sat down with her regards to this was keep it as generic as like. Just put the onus on them to go to the appropriate, um, you know, approval agency in order to get that approved because they didn't. Uh, otherwise we could create later on down the road a prediction in the code. Um, so. I think that this is what I heard Jackie with public health say that she would recommend us do. Um, my only suggestion, and maybe this is me being, because I had to read this sentence a couple of times to, to get it, was, um, if we need a comma after. Treatment and after authority, just so that it. Reads. I don't know. There's something about the wording right in here that's hard for, hard to, because I wasn't quite sure what was going on. So I don't know if there's just like some other. Anybody else has a suggestion on that?
I think even if it was, the structure shall have an approved method of sanitary waste removal or treatment. And maybe a comma by the jurisdiction having authority, comma, required part of it. Yeah, it, it looks like, I think, after treatment and. Um, after authority.
Yeah. Or maybe required isn't, because it says shall, maybe required isn't, uh, anyway.
Okay.
Grammar, but that was the only comment I had on that one.
Okay.
Anybody else have?
But I heard Jackie saying that, too.
I, I do like removing required in that sentence.
Along those lines, Ann, uh, your reference to the wildland urban interface.
Uh huh.
Um, you might want to stick in there as may be defined.
Cause it's not. Right, it hasn't yet, okay.
That's a number three.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. As maybe, like, okay, in the structure of that sentence, think out, take out required. Okay. Thank you. Awesome.
I like your number five.
Trash, waste, or garbage shall not be stored or disposed of onsite and shall be physically removed from the premises to an appropriate receptacle. Basic stuff, right? That's.
I don't know how else to say that.
Is there some cars in there, too? I, I thought I saw something later on, but.
I don't have anything about like, so not storing of any rubbish. And we have, or we have an ordinance, but, but, but you know what? One of the first things that Paul and I went to, well, the first year, we went to backcountry stuff where people were stopped piling all kinds of, um, dead cars and different things like that. So you're probably right, Bryce. I had never even, that's not something I had thought about. Is that, is that what you mean?
Yeah, I just see it on the imagery all the time is that we got a lot of private little junkyards out there.
That's, that's an ordinance 9904 issue.
Can we, yeah, that though, can we like just reiterate it right at the end of this sentence of like, rubbish ordinances shall be followed or whatever? I don't know, something to that effect?
Absolutely. I think that, um, trash waste shall be physically removed to, um, in addition, in addition pursuant to ordinance, uh, oh, nine forty-four. Is that right, Paul?
Ninety-nine oh-four.
Ninety-nine, right numbers got wrong order, ninety-nine oh-four. In addition pursuant to ordinance ninety-nine oh-four.
We could put parentheses, ordinance ninety-nine oh-four, and let the individual ask, what's that?
Okay. And it is, okay. In addition, the site will, will, will remain compliant with ordinance ninety-nine oh-four.
Okay. I think you can reword that. I don't know that we're going to get a lot of wordsmithing done here today, but I think that Heather's point is, is good and Bryce's point is a good point that there's a lot, a lot of those backcountry areas that are being used for junk and dead car storage.
Yeah, I think that's a really good point, too. So number six, fencing is discouraged except for wildlife approved fencing as allowed pursuant to, and that would be the site plan review. So part of the site plan, um, items that have to be put, placed on there are any proposed fencing. And other than wildlife approved fencing, I would think that we would want to discourage somebody from making kind of a compound.
Yeah.
Uh, generators shall be placed in a fully enclosed four-sided storage structure that minimizes noise impacts. As we know, some of these are definitely going to have generators as a source of, um, power. And so thinking ahead, we, Paul and I received a bunch of generator complaints, people using them as temporary power. So, um, we want to mitigate noise concerns. Anything else to expand on that or does that make sense?
I don't think we need to expand on it. I think that we're not looking for a roof because it generates carbon monoxide.
Right, right. It's going to have to have ventilation, so. And the next is just encouraging alternative, um, energy and, and solar. So I think that that was just something that I think we talked about previously. And it just kind of keeps, um, with the idea of these are conservation-minded builds and, and we want to, you know, keep a small footprint. And so I think we're just encouraging them. So it, it's just an encouragement. It's, it's not anything other than, than that. And it's in some of the work that we had done previously, so.
I like the whole, what you said completely.
Well, you said it, so that's why you like it.
When did I say that?
That was, I, I, I impacted that one out of some of Paul's notes. I definitely have to give credit where credit's due.
So I have one other thought for the, um, for this section. Um, and I don't, I, I guess I'd like some feedback on it is, um, the idea of adding in something similar to what we have for the scenic conservation overlay um, in regards to blending in, um, non-reflective and colors that are of natural or whatever. Because some of these will be exposed, some of them will show up. I just would hate for us to have these like reflective roofs or, uh, you know, I don't know. But it just would be nice if we could add something along the lines, simple enough, but yet, you know, guiding people in the direction of, you know, not using blue tarp as their roof.
That would be awesome. Will we put a placeholder for number nine? Thank you, Heather, for doing that, by the way. But, um, yeah, how about a placeholder for, um, a discussion on harmonious and non-reflective, like, yeah.
But that was in their previous draft that we did. Materials.
It might have been in there. I will go back and see in our previous, um, if there was anything else. These were the ones that I kind of pulled out. Um, and then we would go into the site plan, uh, review for the backcountry. So this is, we, I wanted it to as much follow our normal processes for site plan as possible. The only caveat to this is, um, the administrative review part. And the requirements are a little different because the other site plan review that we do is multifamily, commercial, or scenic conservation overlay. So we're looking at a different project base. So some of the supplemental requirements are a little different. We still, uh, I still kept notice requirements. We have that with any, uh, any land use that, um, that we do. But the site plan does not require us to publish the notice. We still send out a, um, notice to adjacent property owners that were reviewing the site plan. And we still, this, the posting requirement seems a little odd in the backcountry. So, but I kept it the same as the, um, the, the site plan just for consistency. But I would like, after I did that, I kind of thought, well, isn't it silly to post a site that probably nobody's going, I mean, the, the, the purpose of posting the site is the people that live in the area or drive by it on a regular basis won't take notice. I'm not sure that that's going to be, that we're going to accomplish anything by requiring them to notice the site, but certainly open for suggestions. The only reason I kept it is because it, it is the same process that we use for site plans other places in the code. Um, so maybe it makes sense here to, the code still allows just a fifteen-day notice for publication when it's administrative. So maybe in these backcountry areas, maybe we do publish and send out letters versus, um, and where this fits in, so the first few items, there's always a pre-op meeting with staff to just figure out what you need to submit. Next are the submittal requirements, so the county fee, I would make the county fee $250, just like any site plan is. The application, proof of ownership. And then the next item is where we, we get the notification buffer. Who do we notify that, that this is happening? In case they have something of a relevant nature to, um, evidence, some evidentiary justification for us conditioning or limiting something that might occur on site. So that one, I think, that notice requirement, I think, would be fine. Um, but just, let me stop right there on, on notice requirements. What if I changed those to just mailed? Um, keep it mailed and posted or change it to mailed and published? Any thoughts? I think the, I think the most reasonable is probably to publish it and mail it, but.
I'm not sure that we need to do any.
Any notice?
Yeah, not only that, but if the subject area is zoned AF or RUR, property will all be zoned backcountry.
That's right, that's right. So I would have to change those. So, so do we, do we need to notice backcountry site plans? That's a big discussion.
I'm sort of suggesting not.
What are other people's thoughts?
I think if it gets through your administrative review, I think that's, just like you would issue a building permit without letting the neighbors know, I mean, you got through the permit, so, or you got through your process, so.
People that live in the backcountry, want to have a backcountry zone dis- property, zoned property, will already know what to expect of their neighbor.
Yeah, I'm kind of in agreement with what Bryce said. Um, what are other people's thoughts?
Well, maybe this is something that you can kind of, uh, like, just through public input on the code. I mean, this could be something where, you know, some people feel strongly that they want to be noticed. And, and so just having those options kind of laid out like that is maybe the way to go. I don't feel strongly, I think posting onsite is definitely not necessary, but, um, but it is, it, when you think about it, it is a single-family home. It's, it's not something that would usually rise to.
I think that's a great point, Abby. The, you know, the other site plans we notice, again, have completely different impacts. They're commercial, they're in the scenic conservation overlay where we need to preserve the future and, um, multifamily, which again, the impacts are completely different than, you know, our whole desire is to mitigate impacts. And, you know, and, and the, and the outcome of this is a building permit for use, non-commercial use by the property owner. So it's got a different outcome than all those other site plans do. So I think that's a really good point, Abby, to maybe why it's a good idea or why there's, there's not really an identified need to do any noticing.
Yeah, I, I agree with you all. I feel like it's important to be transparent, but I feel that the party said or people who would be affected, they would bring up the conversation. If we opened it up and we posted, I think it would just, uh, backtrack and it would just create another conversation and just like it along the process. So I, I feel, um, in this, uh, circumstance that it is not necessary to post it, uh, because we're talking about preservation and, you know, we're not talking about commercial or industrial buildings. And so, um, I, I say no as well.
All right.
Okay, I think consensus, then everybody thumbs up, no noticing, right?
No noticing.
Okay, great, we'll take that out. Um, next are all of the elements of the site plan, um, that we want to see um, to be able to get an idea of. And now this part I was putting together pretty quickly, so I could have missed a few things. A scaled and detailed site plan showing the location and dimensions, including heights of all existing and proposed site improvements that demonstrate compliance with this clo- code, including but not limited to the dimensions, the adjacent roads, adjacent land uses and zoning, all easements, topography, and an elevation drawing, and a written narrative describing compliance with Lake County public health plan. Um, and then there goes on to be some, ooh, not sire disturbance, that should be site disturbance. Com- compliance with the following site disturbance and design guidelines. Thank you, Heather. So then we just go into, you know, the minimalness of, of, um, earthwork. Side plants submitted with building permit shall contain grading and excavation plans. Development, including structures, roads, driveways, leach field area, and utilities shall minimize the need for earth moving and site disturbance to the maximum extent practical, practical, I can't say that. Yeah, site disturbance, including vegetation removal, shall be confined to that area needed to reasonably accommodate the footprint of the building, roadways, driveways, leach fields, utilities, and the physical space for fire mitigation. So that's just, just continuing to back up any of those kind of goals of what the backcountry is and to mitigate any kind of risks. Does that cover it? Is it too much? Is it too wordy?
It's a, it's ba- it's pretty basic. It covers, uh, most of the things we'd be interested in them doing, so.
Okay. This kind of detail, we'd be doing a good review for you guys.
I think so.
I think it's unfortunate that you have to say it. That you want people to be able to, that we would want people to be able to understand that's what we're trying to do. That it's just unfortunate that there's some people that aren't going to know that unless you say it.
You got to cover them all, Paul.
Yeah, you do.
And, and there'll be something that happens that we haven't even contemplated. There'll be something. Um, and this just, you know, encourages not to have excessive slopes, but puts a cap on, in no case can we consider anything that exceeds thirty percent. And I mean, that's.
It's hard to build a house on a twenty percent slope.
Right, it's, that even thirty percent is, is generous, I think. Um, but, um, we definitely, I think, have to put it. Because that gives, that gives us the, the point by which we can say we can approve it. So it's always good, some of these things are kind of open-ended. So it's good to have some, you know, codified places that give us the ability to say that it just, it just can't happen. So it, you know, it helps us have that cutoff point. Maybe it's too generous. Thoughts?
I, I like it.
Looks good.
Um, soil disturbance and structure shall be set a minimum of twenty-five feet from the stream, water body, or wetland and meet all other requirements of this code. That's just typical. Here it is, you're right, Paul, building materials and colors. To the extent, uh, practical again, or practical, mimic and blend with those found in the surrounding natural lands. Keep highly reflective gas or metal surfaces are prohibited. And fire retardant materials shall be allowed, provided they have a neutral appearance. Fencing is discouraged, exterior lighting, so we get back to dark sky compliance. Um, oh, so I, I was going to, you'll see in parentheses, that was a note to myself, to, uh, just use it, dark sky compliant, exterior lighting, it needs to be in there, so we're consistent. Uh, tree removal, um, we want to see that, you know, they've got a plan for that. Setbacks have been adhered to, um, fire mitigation. And then geologic mining and environmental hazards. You know, we want to see if there are any environmental hazards present and if they can be, if they need to be further researched, if they could be mitigated, or if we end up in a situation that, um, I, I kind of think that if we get to a point that we think we can't issue a building permit, we'll be, we'll be chatting with planning commission to let you know that and see if, if there's any reason for, um, an appeal on, on our decision. There is an appeal process built in, in the code for site plan. So, uh, but it, but appeals of the site plan, Paul, they go to or are administrative decision. Those don't go to the planning commission, those go to the board of, uh, adjustment, correct?
Yes.
So if, if we do get appealed on that decision, probably before we would, my thought, and this is just kind of an aside, if, if Paul and I thought that we were potentially going to have an appeal decision, we would probably want to lift it up to the planning commission for a decision. Um, because the board of adjustment, um, Because the board of adjustment may not, in this particular instance, they may not be as intimately aware of the code as our planning commission is. So in this, in a situation like this, I think before we would, if we thought that we were at that point, this is one of those places that I think that we would probably potentially want to seek some further assistance and another, you know, lift it up to, to another review, is my thought.
Through the planning commission.
Through the planning commission, without giving the decision so that we could lift it up. And then if the decision, you know, we would, we would see where we would land.
I think we could say that in the code.
Okay.
And then I think we're going to need to get legal review of this code.
Yes, absolutely. We typically get legal review of everything that we do prior to adoption.
Yeah, we might say, no, you can't elevate it to the planning, you have to elevate it to the board of adjustment.
Oh, and I think that it, so my point being, not that it, you know, if it's an appeal, I think that's where it goes. But I'm saying prior to us, this might be one of those times that we don't give a decision on, on the site plan, and, and we say, we're going to have to kick this one up. Because once we give a decision, then, yeah, the board of, so I was, I was meaning that prior to a decision being made.
Okay.
Yeah, we could refer to the, to the planning commission.
Does anybody have any changes, questions, thoughts on?
This one, just one, Ann, under J.
Yep.
The last, the last line. Okay. Prospect pits, addits, comma, shafts, comma, stopes, and other, other hazards due to historic mining. Because you know, like the stope, the big stope opened up on the bike trail, and you're all familiar with that.
Yeah.
And we, and we have a lot of stopes here and there, in, in the, late in the county, so. Yeah, we don't want to miss stopes.
That's very good. Very good. Thank you, Howard. That's awesome.
You're welcome.
Okay. I think we can move into definitions.
So before we do that, I just want to say that we're at the six o'clock mark. I don't know if everybody, well, we're pretty close to six o'clock mark. So I don't know where everybody's at, if we want to push, well, I guess we're almost done. Do we want to push through and just get this last little section?
I think we ought to. I agree too.
Everybody's, everybody's okay?
Sure.
Yeah. Okay. So the next part, so C, actually, you can strike that. We're going to take away the notice requirement. But of course, we'll have an approval criteria, because we certainly want to make sure that we, there's a basis for approving, approving what conditions or denying a site plan. So these are standard, that the proposed site plan is consistent with the goals and objectives of the site plan, that the, that it conforms to requirements and provisions of the code, that it adequately addresses the supplemental requirements, that it's in harmony with neighboring land uses and future intended land uses, and that it substantially in compliance with the required, with the requirements and provisions of the section. That allows us to take certain things on a case-by-case basis. It may not meet every single thing, but if it's properly mitigated, or there's a condition, then we can substantially have compliance with all of the requirements. The finding would be the zoning official or their representative will be, will, shall be a written, shall be written and include the findings of fact. And those findings will be recorded with the clerk recorder. So that's the same as any other administrative finding that Paul and I make, those get recorded. Appeals go to the board of adjustment, but again, I would always, I think, defer to the, refer to the planning commission before we would be in a position where I think that we would have an appeal. That's just aside. And the lapse of approval, this just lets, if somebody gets an approval but fails to pull the building permit or, or something, we put a one year, and this, this follows exactly like the site plan, so that somebody doesn't have a site plan approval, and it doesn't get built, and it sits out there forever. So this is exactly what our other site plan does. And then we have to define what a backcountry structure is. And it's a non-commercial, temporarily occupied habitable structure. The structure shall be less than a dwelling unit, as specifically evidenced by the absence of a kitchen among other amenities. The structure shall not function as a primary residence and shall be limited to no more than 1,200 square feet. That's a hard, that was a hard definition to write, so I hope I got it in there, but.
There was somewhere we had talked about that it can't be inhabited for more than six months at a time, or in.
Yeah, that, that will actually come through the review of the septic system by the board of health. Or if there is something less than a standard OWTS, On-Site Waste Water Treatment System, that requires water, general well, then they will actually say that it's only, it's, it's, what is it, what's the term, Ann?
Temporary, they will say it's a temporary, it has temporary occupancy, and they will, they will record, it's not a deed restriction, but they, they record the variance, correct?
Yeah. They, they will record the fact that it's available only 180 days out of the year.
So I've just, by calling it temporarily occupied, I'm piggybacking on the public health definition of temporary occupancy, which is no more than 180 days, more six months out of the year. So.
But to your point, Abby, if that changes ever, we're saying, I mean, basically, we're just saying temporarily, but we aren't defining that. So I guess the question is, do we want to define it? And if we do, I can see going both ways on that, because I think in some ways, we want to make, you know, that's the intent, is that these aren't a bunch of, you know, full-time structures. But at the same time, do we want to police that? And I, I don't know. I could see going both ways. What are people's thoughts on that?
The only thing that I would throw in is that, right now, and like you, absolutely, like you said, Heather, this may outlast the current process, but I think we're kind of relying on public health recording, putting something of record about for subsequent owners that this can only be occupied on a temporary basis. But absolutely, we do have to continue to think about this as a standalone code, so.
And then, and I wonder if it's maybe just in the initial communication, just being clear of what the current time limits are, as, as this is moving through the adoption process.
As far as how we're presenting this change of code?
Yeah.
Were we not sort of heading in a direction where you could have a, up to a maximum of 600 square feet, if you, and, and have something less than an OWTS, if you get approved by the board of health? Anything over 600 feet, up to 1,200 feet? Would, would that was going to be a full-time house?
Yeah, you're right. So this, the backcountry structure, I think maybe did have a max square footage of 600, and between 600 and 1,200, we decided that was going to be the single-family detached.
Yeah.
So we'll have to change that. And I apologize, I have to bump off just for a second here, so.
No worries.
Are we done?
I actually think, yeah, we can, we can, I will change the definition to no more than 600 square feet, and revisit that the, the specific standard for a single-family home is six to 12.
Yeah.
So, and then I will further follow up with getting the use table out to everyone to just contemplate all the different uses, and possibly what else could be allowed in this zone district, either conditionally or used by right. And does anybody have anything else that they would like to, they'd like more information on, or more information that staff could get, anyone to kind of help in this decision-making? Is there anything else we could provide?
I say, good job, Ann.
Yeah. I did all that. I have a request from Bryce.
Okay.
It's nothing to do with this particular case. Bryce, you saved me a phone call. I've lost my Lake County roadmap. Could you send me one?
Yeah, do you want like the physical printout?
Yeah, the, the printout of the Lake County ma, you know, a map of the Lake County roads.
Sure. How big? I mean, I got it like three by three.
No, no, no. Eight and a half by 11.
Okay. Yeah, I can do that for you.
Thanks a lot.
Um, you know, at the end of the staff report, talked about the process. So I guess I should go back to that and what our next steps are real quick before we sign off quickly. And that would be that we feel that we've got enough of the code done that we could start the process, and initiate the application, and start identifying our stakeholders that, and the referral agencies. I'll go ahead and get, as suggested, really great suggestion of Sarah's, to get this out to the Forest Service and BLM sooner than later, so that they can know what we're working on. But I do think that we are getting very close to wanting to initiate the application. So probably by the next meeting, we'll have closer to, should have final draft. You'll look at the use table, make one last suggestion, and then we'll work into making sure that we've identified everybody this is going to affect, and go ahead and get those early referrals out. So my thought is by the next applica, by the next meeting, we'll be able to have final draft, take any last minute comments, and start working on our notification areas. And the last item, I think, that we'll work on at that time is creating a fact sheet that we can distribute when we send out the notice, and that we can publish on the website. Since this is a substantial change, we want to get as much information out to everyone as soon as possible. So those would be my, I think are the next steps for everybody to think about. And if anybody wants to reach out at any time and help, just let me know.
Speaking of websites, let's everybody have a look at our, our webpage on our new website. It's a little thin, I think it could be fattened up a bit. Any suggestions from all of you would be welcome, as to what needs to be there.
Yeah. It will, one, one area that's going to start seeing some activity are the applications. We have a lot of, we have a lot of new applications that are going to be coming in to be put on there. Like I, like I mentioned, I'm looking through the preliminary for completeness review on Angel View. And so we will have a whole page, or it'll be your planning commission page, that we'll start uploading all of the applications for discussion, so.
Hey.
And that sounds great, Sarah. Yeah. It sounds like we're all going to start working on website, our, our new web presence, and making it as robust as possible. So thank you, Sarah. That's awesome. I know ours can use some work too, and we're really excited to get it up to stuff. So that'll be great.
Thanks for everything you guys are doing.
Well, thank you for saying so, Howard. Do appreciate it.
Yes, we appreciate all you guys. Huge. Thank you.
Yeah. Did you take care of that cat, Heather?
Oh, no, it was, I, there was, there was a couple that was coming from a really long ways way to pick something up, and they were supposed to be here hours ago, and so they just got here.
I saw the cat roaming around.
Yeah, he likes to be a part of my Zoom calls.
Okay. I'm off. See you later, all of you.
Oh, do you want a motion for adjournment?
Oh, yeah, that was Howard's motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
So long.
All in favor? Bye.
Thanks, everybody.
Hey, Ann, I'll insert my intent, and then I forgot what else we were adding down here, because I jumped off.
Oh, you got the 600 square feet. And then I was just going to make sure that I put a use standard on single-family for backcountry that limits it to 1,200 square feet. And the other thing that I guess I need to make sure is that, you know, the other thing too, that just hit me, is I, I think that site plans, the way I have it written now, are only subject to backcountry builds, but site plans in the backcountry should be, I mean, we already have a site plan process, so maybe it's sufficient. We already do site plan reviews, so maybe it's okay. I was just wondering if it needs to be on single-family uses, to, it needs to point to the same site plan that backcountry builders. It seems like I, I've kind of put one without the other. So anyway, I'll, I'll think on that and.
Okay.
Get that in there. And Bryce, yeah, I'll shoot you an email for, when maybe we can get together.
Yeah, I was thinking if you, if you're around, I could give you a call tomorrow, we could talk about kind of including those other straggler parcels, and then maybe, it sounds like we're almost ready to do that, pulling the data for the owners.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I know it's going to be a lot, so I think I keep, other things keep popping up in front of it, but I know it's inevitable, so you can jump on it. That sounds great. Tomorrow would be actually a great day. Wednesday and Friday are already booked up, but tomorrow's looking okay so far.
Okay. If you're available in the morning, I'll just give you a call then.
Perfect. That sounds great. I'll look forward to it.
Thanks, Heather. Have a good night.
Thanks, you guys too.
Thanks, Heather. That was awesome. Thanks for doing all the edits.
I'll just get this input, and then I'll just forward this to you, and you can do the editing, but at least it's all here, so if you have to move it.
Okay. That sounds awesome. Thank you so much.
You are welcome.
Okay. Have a great night.
Thanks.